The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the August 8th meeting of the Cary Town Council, and at this time I'll recognize Mrs. Robinson for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you very much. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at Agenda Item A3, which is the adoption of our agenda. Staff has requested that we remove Item B1C from this agenda since the resolution is not ready yet. Staff will include this item on our August 22nd agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now at the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. That's Item B, for the benefit of the people watching on TV. We're going to take a moment to read our consent agenda items. Please remember that one vote approves all of these items. The first item, approval of the minutes, then approval of the tax report, and I'll remind everyone, we removed the Resolution B1C from the agenda. Mrs. Robinson, could you please briefly summarize the Operations Committee consent agenda items?
Yes, I will. There were 10 items on the agenda for the Operations Committee. All of the items have been moved forward to the council under the consent agenda. The first item is municipal agreements, the operation and maintenance of traffic signals. The second item is the right-of-way closing Green Level Church Road. The third item is the Town of Cary utility systems master plans. The fourth item is the Jordan Lake reclamation faced to reclaimed water line. Fifth item is the right-of-way closing, and that is for Oak Hill Chapel Road. The sixth item is the resolution to receive a grant award. The seventh item is municipal records retention and disposition schedule. The next item is the downtown Cary Theater, called The Cary, Building Addition Cafe, and that is a recommendation to transfer 150,000 in already appropriated funds to the project. The next item is the streetlight installation for Winston Ridge subdivision, and the last item under consent for the Operations Committee is the resolution and lease approval for the Jones House.
Thank you. One of the items on the consent agenda is a streetlight installation at Winston Ridge subdivision, which I happen to live in. This issue was prompted by a request from a subdivision, from the subdivision as I lived, the Homeowners Association. Council members have a duty to vote unless they're, unless a statute, unless a statute or conflict of interest precludes them from voting. This matter not only affects Winston Ridge, but it affects the citizens of the town in general, since it would be a policy change, and will have no direct substantial or readily identifiable financial impact on me. Therefore, I would be voting on this item. Does anyone on council have other items they would like to pull from the consent agenda? From the consent agenda? Okay? Usually, we pull items from the consent agenda if they're controversial. If they're non-controversial, they'll remain on the consent agenda. And we've had email requesting that a couple of items related to downtown be pulled, and it's been my practice to pull those items. I'm not sure if they're controversial to the council, but they might be controversial to a couple of people. So what I'm going to do is make a motion that these two items, Item B2H and B2J, be pulled for discussion. That's the downtown theater café and the lease for the Jones House. And once I make that motion, if we get a second, then we'll adopt the, and it's approved, we'll adopt the consent agenda as amended. If not, I'll entertain another motion. So I move that we amend the consent agenda and pull B2H and B2J. Is there a second? Seeing no second, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda is presented.
Second. There's a motion, second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no recognition reports and presentations this evening, so we'll move right to Public Speaks Out. Our next two agenda items are Public Speaks Out, Item D, and regular public hearings, Item E. We've included instructions for speaking at these forums on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for each of their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic that is not a public hearing this evening. There's a one-hour time limit, and we have a lot of speakers, so I'll be strictly enforcing the three-minute time limit for Public Speaks Out speakers. And I thank all of the speakers in advance for adhering to our guidelines and our time limit. And as we approach the one-hour time limit, I'm going to start doing time checks, so we'll know how many speakers that we have time for. There's a timer on the podium, and it's going to be green for the first two and a half minutes, and when 30 seconds remain, it's going to turn yellow. And at the end of that last 30 seconds, a total of three minutes, it's going to flash red, and at that time, I'll have to interrupt you immediately, which may seem rude, but that's not the intention. We just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. But I'll interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments. So, we're now ready to begin Public Speaks Out again. We have a one-hour time limit, and I would invite our first speaker forward at this, oh, we're going to take Ms. Emmons first.
Honorable Mayor and council staff, councilman, I want to speak to the movie theater as a disabled person. And as a disabled person, driving past, I realize that there's no parking. And there's no parking at a lot of public facilities downtown. There's no parking at the Academy Street Park. There's no parking, you know, very little parking at Page Walker for disabled people, and on and on and on. But when you're disabled, you live in a world of cans. I'm not talking about riding a bike, or skiing, or skating. I'm talking about just ordinary living activities, like getting up a curb. I look at a curb, I can't get up at the curb. I can't get off the toilet seat without a handrail. I can't carry my food tray, and I can't carry a lot of things because my hand is wetted to my cane. I have to look downward because a paperclip, or a wet spot, or a piece of paper might cause me to fall and break more bones. And that goes on and on and on. And beyond that, beyond those limitations, there's energy issues. Disabled people evaluate what they can do in terms of the energy it takes to get there. And I'm talking about mobility impairments. If I go to the theater and I want to see a specific show, I have to know whether it's in Theater 1 or Theater 13, because if it's in Theater 13, that's a long walk for me, and I have to do a cost-benefit analysis to determine whether I can even make that or it's worth it. So, I guess we live in a different level of consciousness than most able-bodied people. But mobility impairments are not age-specific, but as bodies age, they become prone to degenerations. Common among seniors are heart disease, Parkinson's, osteoporosis, strokes, diabetic neuropathy, chronic severe arthritis, worn-out knees, worn-out hips, and worn-out other body parts. So in the 2010 census, the Town of Cary had 35,700 residents that were 50 years or older. They're about 55 now, and that's 26.4% of the population. According to facts provided by the North Carolina DMV, there were 1.4 million permanent disability placards and licenses issued, and 16,570 temporary. That's a lot of people, and many of those are Cary residents.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Your three minutes have expired. If you give the town clerk your comments, we'll be sure to get a copy of them.
Okay.
Thank you. I would invite the next speaker forward at this time.
Proceed.
Just a second. When that green light goes, green.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council members. I'm Joel Green, President of Harmony Homeowners Association. I'm here tonight representing the common interests of 300 Cary families. We were, we're here to talk about the rezoning petition on the agenda tonight, 12 RES 20. The Association believes that the proposed rezoning would be detrimental to our area. Please find an addition to my comments here, a petition electronically signed by some 200 current Cary citizens who oppose this rezoning. It's coming to you now. As listed in our original statement to the Town Council, this proposed development does not meet the LDO requirements for parity with surrounding existing developments. We're very disappointed the applicant has made very little attempt to rectify this in the almost 10 months since we were here before you, previously. We have a number of Harmony homeowners who are going to speak tonight on various specific points, so I'm just going to highlight one that, that I believe is the most important here, is traffic safety. The current, the Turner Creek PPD capped the Harmony subdivision at 300 residential units, because the town determined that was the level of traffic the Turner Creek Road can support. Court and committed in December to try to find ways to improve Turner Creek Road, but no action has come of that. Turner Creek Road is now at the limit the town Cary set in 2005, and this proposal would add some 30% more. The proposed development will also impact North Carolina Highway 55, which is already dangerous in this area. Further consideration needs to be given to mitigating these impacts. The TAR dismisses the failures as only affecting those new residents, but I think we can all believe that, that folks that have to wait too long to enter a highway tend to take more risks. Please table this time until such matters, as these traffic issues are mitigated. Consider, thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Prasad Varha Batla, and I'm a resident of 312 Alliance Circle Cary, and that's in the Harmony subdivision. Actually, I will not spend too much time talking about density and parity. You will hear about it possibly behind me for some time now. But I'm not saying that they're not pertinent. They're actually very pertinent. The thing is, we know for a fact that these townhomes and the number of townhomes we are trying to build in a 15-acre land is far higher than the density of all the surrounding neighborhoods that represent about 12,000 households in Cary. I'm talking about Chesneakland, I'm talking about Brickstone, and I'm talking about Harmony, and you can check it out, possibly about 3, 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and we're talking about six here, okay? And obviously, in terms of parity, well, all of these things, within a mile radius, everything is a single-family home. These are townhomes. But I will spend next two minutes expressing my disappointment with part of this process. I've been involved in this process for the last one year, going through the meetings that we've been having around 12 RES 20, okay? And last month, I was disappointed when I went to the Planning and Zoning Board, and I'm going to talk about the two things that disappointed me. The first one is what Joel mentioned about the safety on Highway 55. About eight to nine homeowners mentioned that in the PNC meeting last month, okay? And people talked about, well, if you have to wait for five minutes when you're turning left on 55, which, where people go at 50 to 60 miles per hour, it may result in some impatience, right? There are two or three statements that came out at that time. One of them was, oh, 55 will be 55. And this came from one of the PNC members, I'm sorry, but 55 will be 55, or it's people's personal responsibility. Well, if it's people's personal responsibility, why do we have this process? Just build anything, and people will figure out their responsibilities out. That's, what I'm saying is, there could have been a different way. The same argument could have been presented, if they have good reasons for saying that, well, we have to deal with it because it's not part of PNC's responsibility. That's one part of the story. But those statements possibly left me a little disappointed with, I mean, these are things that I do not expect for people sitting at that place. It's as simple as that, as a resident of Cary, that's what I'm saying. The second one is, there is definitely imminent danger. There are two people who have deceased in the last one and a half years on 55, on somewhere around the left turns. And now, the traffic study that we had done last time clearly said that both the exit points from the community that we are trying to build there are, are not necessarily up to standard. They're LOSE, right? And there's nothing that can be done to mitigate it. At this time, you're going to bring in 95 townhomes with two-car garages? So that's the reason why we are saying that we should reconsider what we have taken as given from the traffic study perspective. I have about 17 seconds, so I'll just spend, the second thing is about the safety of children of Turner Creek School. One of the things that was said is, the, I mean, the Planning and Zoning Board said this is not our problem. Wake County Public School System has to deal with it. But the kids who walk to school are residents of the Town of Cary, and they don't belong to Wake County, and the road belongs to Town of Cary and not Wake County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My topic is the HMXD zoning in the Cary Town Center in general, and the movie theater in particular. One of the troubling features is the elimination of minimum parking space requirements for new non-residential development. HMXD is about aesthetics and design, rather than providing for the needs of citizens and business owners. Long-standing, well-conceived, and universally applied parking requirements found in the LDO properly note that cars are here to stay, that many people depend on vehicular transportation, portal-to-portal, that they facilitate commerce and sustain the vitality of the community. HMXD zoning is the antithesis of this logic. The HMXD is disparate impact at its worst. It is exclusionary for major segments of a community that has a 25% senior population and a large number of mobility impaired residents. The rights of persons with disabilities to full and equal access is affirmed in the Civil Rights Act, the Rehabilitation Act, and the Americans with Disabilities Act. Cary's HMXD zoning infringes on the rights established in these preeminent pieces of legislation. I'm not suggesting that the town create a handful of handicap spaces. I am recommending full implementation of the LDO on-street parking requirements, without exception for the Town Center, and that the LDO be amended. Whether parking is zoned in or out, the theater has 181 seats and should have 45 parking spaces for patrons, plus ample additional spaces for the second building and upper floors. I recommend a parking study to determine the availability of public on-street and off-street parking, which town planners expect to serve, which town planners expect to service the existing businesses and the theater complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for your time. My name is Jessica Kirkham. On July 25th, Town Council approved an annexation allowing Derby Downs to continue to develop an additional five lots in the Copperleaf subdivision, and there is also an approval, an approved, sorry, an approved plan to expand the neighborhood across Morrisville Parkway in a site plan called Copperleaf Reserve. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned that Derby Downs has not been a good steward to our environment in and around Copperleaf during the development period, and I'm concerned for the future impact to our community as this developer continues to expand. I'd like to bring your attention to several examples in the handout that I've included. The first issue is with the stormwater pipe that was installed on my property. Because this pipe was designed to open onto private land, I've learned that it is up to personal property owners to maintain. This then requires ordinary residents such as myself to become experts on erosion control and stormwater culvert maintenance. It seems unconscionable to me that the developer would submit and the town would approve plans that require residents to assume this kind of responsibility for the stormwater drainage systems in our community, especially in front of a protected area like the Cape Fear riparian buffer. It would have been far better, albeit slightly more costly for the developer, to extend the pipe to a common area or onto land maintained by the town, so it can be inspected and maintained properly when the plans for this neighborhood were originally developed. Secondly, other than something called a level spreader, which I'll get to, there was no rock or anything in front of that pipe that would dissipate water coming out of it, except for the earth in front of it. When I acquired the property, the area in front of this pipe was so saturated with water, it was basically a swamp and totally inaccessible. Exhibit B in your handout includes pictures of what this culvert looked like as the developer left it, as well as a picture of what it looks like now after the property owners were forced to address the drainage issues. Please note that there is a significant amount of rock installed. This was done at the expense of the property owners, not the developer. A second example is that level spreader I referred to. This is basically a soil berm that was installed by the developer to eliminate concentrated water flow by allowing water to spill over the top of it before flowing downstream. It appears this berm was never checked or maintained during the six-year development period between when it was installed in 2006 and when we acquired, when we acquired the property as the first owners in late 2012. Because of the lack of maintenance, the erosion became so severe that a water, that water cut through this channel, basically creating a river, doing the exact opposite of what it was intended to do. This resulted in flooding of low-lying areas, standing water issues, and decaying the root structure of huge trees that were 15-plus inches in diameter and caused them to fall. There's a picture of that as well in your handout. There are also other issues in the community, including standing water on community trails, retention ponds not being maintained properly, and standing water in drainage pipes. At the end of the day, I believe developers should be held responsible and accountable for the land that they develop until it transitions to the permanent property owners, instead of coming in, putting in a few lots, collecting their profit, and neglecting the land.
Sorry, I have to interrupt you.
That's, thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Ed Casper. I live at 516 Alliance Circle in Cary. The Posh family, who also helped me prepare these documents, has, is not able to attend tonight because his father took ill, and he had to go to Florida to take care of his family. I wanted to say that we are in support of "Carry On" the slogan and the noble vision that encompasses, but we believe that the Town of Cary needs to implement a new adequate facilities program that takes this vision into development. I have listed on the first page 14 points where 12 RES 20 fails to meet the recommendations and requirement of our LDO. And the references for those are on the following pages, as well as a map. I won't go into those details here because of time restraints. We believe that the developers should reconsider their proposals. We have suggested building single-family homes, as is allowable under the zoning, or the 68 patio homes, that's also under the developer's proposal, or even a combination. And we also proposed to White and Turner Creek Road, which would at least afford some relief to a condition that the town staff has concluded is a major safety concern. The high density requested makes our community in an unsafe condition, and it actually makes it worse. The council has heard from many parents like myself that are proud of our daughters and our sons, and we're proud of this community. Cary is a beautiful place, but safety is our number-one concern, and we feel the developer has overlooked that. We no longer have the safeguards of the adequate facilities, but we still have the vision of what we all hope Cary would fulfill, and the reason why all of us are here. We stand before you today in support of Imagine Cary Project, and of all your previous efforts and commitments. We are standing here today to support you, the Town of Cary, to have good efforts with reasonable and respectable development. Therefore, we urge the council to reject proposals like 12 RES 20 until those needs can be adequately met. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Before I introduce myself, I would like to make one comment. And this is in January of 2012. Ed Goff, in response to a question Don Franz had about the restaurant in the leasable space of the theater stated, "There is no market for a restaurant in the leasable area." Good evening. My name is Alan Turco. Hi, Jennifer.
Hey.
My wife and I lived in Cary for 16 years, and we can honestly say it's been a beautiful ride. But lately, there's been some bumps in the road, and one of those is the theater. The last couple of days, I did an extensive research in the theater. I went through all the minutes, all the work sessions for 2011, 2012, and 2013, and besides this beautiful spreadsheet that I created, I also came out with a huge headache. This is crazy. I went through, and if I could quickly scan what has happened so far, Ed Goff wanted a three-story building downtown because he thought it was a missing link. Then you bought the property next to the theater, because it was going to create 40 parking spaces. And then you bought the theater for $410,000, and it was going to cost $1 million to renovate. And then you decided to put the three-story building next to the theater, and then you got all these conceptual drawings. It was beautiful. You took it to the people twice, and they loved it. But you didn't tell them how much it was going to cost. So, and the staff went out, and they got bids, and you chose this company to veer construction, and the base cost was $3.9 million, plus add-ons. You want a bathroom? Extra. You want a café? Extra. And then I found this in my research, a report by the staff. They were going to brief you on an update of the theater. And in the funding section, they had $3.1 million. They changed it, made it $5 million, and now we understand it's $6 million. It's insane. You know, I took a walk around a theater this morning, and I found 12, I'm going to repeat, 12 restaurants, delis, and cafés in walkable distance of the theater. And you want to put a café in the theater? I mean, this, these people have their business. I mean, what, what happened to the concept that you build this theater, people come down, they go to the movies, they may go get a bite to eat before or after the movie, and they patronize the local restaurants?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to interrupt.
Pardon?
Your time has expired. I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. If you have your comments written, please.
That was three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last comment, no café in the theater. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Vicki D. Doug, and I have a few questions to ask about the Jones House. First, the lease seems premature. We see no renovation budget, no spending caps, and no business plan yet. We're spending the money and signing leases for the Jones House, so I have some basic questions that I hope have already been asked and answered. With only, with only one-month rent as earnest money, what protections does the town have? That's the first question. With a prime spot, extremely favorable terms, and the town paying for the tenant's specific retrofit... retrofit, aren't we creating unfair competition? Will the cost estimate for this renovation turn out like the 1 million theater renovation we first read about in the Cary news? And will the town provide the complete financial and incentive package and open this as a competitive bid opportunity to other Cary businesses? That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Arthi Dixit, and I live at 518 Alliance Circle in Harmony. Well, I'm here to say that current D.R. Horton proposal, 12 REZ-20, does not comply with many LDO regulations as per sections 3.4.1 and 1.3 while considering rezoning application. Point number one, preserve the character and quality of residential neighborhoods. Well, this does not happen when proposed density is close to eight and the surrounding neighborhood density is around 3.5 dwelling units per acre. Number two is lessen congestion on the streets. And number three states that prevent the overcrowding of land and avoid undue concentrations of population. Neither of these criteria are fulfilled because the proposed 94 units with two car garages will attract similar population as single-family homes due to vicinity of schools and freeways. So what we are really looking at is virtually 94 single homes disguised in 94 town homes. Well, the last traffic study did not address that. We are also looking at increased population and proportional increase in traffic, which is 10 trips per day per household, which is definitely more than six. This also undermines the safety of our children and their parents who walk to and from the school. I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that initial numbers that were presented by D.R. Horton were pretty high than permissible density to make even a smaller change look quite significant. Number four is the service demands of new development will exceed capabilities of existing utilities and public facilities. This will result in trespassing of Harmony amenities, including pool and tennis courts. This also raises safety concern and affects quality of life in our neighborhood. Number five is maintain the property value of existing neighborhoods. Well, obviously, with increased density housing, surrounding property values are likely to go down. In nutshell, the proposed zoning classification is not suitable for the stated property since the surrounding communities have much lower density of 3 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. On a personal note, I have lived in Cary for 14 years with my family. The previous subdivision that I lived in, in Cary neighborhood, we had a large wooded area right behind our house. We were told that nothing's going to happen there, but almost overnight, it was cut down, replaced by new homes. This was one of the big reasons that spurred us to move to this neighborhood, Harmony. Now it's happening again, and only this time, moving is not my option. Hence, I'm standing here in front of you to urge you not to be fooled by developer tactics.
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
I want to thank the council and mayor for taking the two items, the Jones House and the theater, off the consent agenda. My name is Scott D. Doug. I would like to talk a little bit about why some of us thought that was controversial. It started when I went to the second Imagine Cary Steering Committee meeting, and one of the members stood up and he said, "Boldly, we're going to pick the winners and the losers." And it got me thinking about what that meant. Things like public-private partnerships was also discussed in that meeting, which I thought was odd because it was a very second meeting. And it looks to me like the town is picking winners and losers. What we're seeing is ad hoc incremental spending, or nickel-and-diming, as some people call it. Where are we going to see the return on the spending? We keep hearing about it as investment. How does it fit in the overall downtown fiscal plan for this town? We don't see that. Maybe it's there, we don't see it. More importantly, when do we recognize a point of diminishing return? When do we say, "We've put so much money in this, and now it's time to put it up for auction? Let a private enterprise take it over?" I don't know. Can't see the points. These projects compete directly with free-market enterprises downtown, as we heard tonight. Have they been offered that same kind of public funding? Some of them, we've talked to, didn't even know what was going on. There's not that many of them. Have they been notified? Are they here? Have they provided the opportunity to do that and talk to you as competitors to their business? Are their financial packages written down and published for these two projects? So they could be opened up for bids. I haven't been able to find that. If private businesses then don't see any market for this, why do we see a market? Why are we spending taxpayer money to do that? The other thing we don't see is a transparent policy for the transfer of public funds to private companies. This is important. We may call it public-private partnership, but where's the authority? Where's the constitutional power behind transferring public funds to private individuals? Do we have a written policy and guidelines for that? Haven't seen that. And then finally, what's the public disclosure policy that tells us, once they're done, what was the return on investment? What did we get out of it, and why did we want to invest that? And so tonight, I would like to just request that some of us have an opportunity to work on these kind of things and put together the long-term fiscal plan and see where our money's going. And I just would like to say to the mayor that it's not a couple of people. We've literally knocked on hundreds of doors. And the feedback we're giving you tonight is the feedback we've heard from a lot of people because they just are not aware of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ken Doherty, and I represent 78 homeowners of the Chesney-Glen community as president of our homeowners association. I speak tonight regarding our homeowners' ongoing concern over the proposed annexation, rezoning, and planned redevelopment or development of the Hernan-Burt property that will be heard later tonight. Nearly a year ago, I spoke before you at the initial public hearing on this rezoning petition. At that time, our concerns were primarily the impact of the proposed development on the Chesney-Glen homeowners whose properties border the subject property, as well as the inadequacy of the proposed plan and existing infrastructure to deal with the resulting increased traffic. I'm glad to say through discussions between the developer and the surrounding communities, some of those concerns have been lessened. However, our concerns over traffic have only grown over the past few months. Unlike many Cary communities that typically have several entrances and exits to a main thoroughfare, Chesney-Glen, like its neighbor Harmony and the nearby Turner Creek Elementary School, have only a single means of egress to NC 55. Due to the unique nature of Chesney-Glen and other enemy's entities in the immediate vicinity, the development of a neighboring community with nearly 100 homes raises many issues with regard to how access will be accomplished and how the increased traffic will impact the surrounding communities. In terms of access, the current plan proposes the use of a full-access road only 800 yards to the south of Catlin Road, which is our only single access point to Chesney-Glen. If implemented, the use of this full-access road will make our homeowners' exit to NC 55 much more difficult than it already is. As our intersection does not meet the warrants for a traffic light, our community would be left without meaningful redress for what could be a dangerous situation. The challenge of access to the proposed development was a subject of a recent traffic impact analysis. With regard to the full-access road near Catlin Road, the traffic impact analysis found that only one geometric improvement that is restricting the eastbound movement to right-in, right-out access only would improve the eastbound approach. However, that improvement is not recommended due to its potential negative impacts on Turner Creek Road, which is the primary access to the development. This highlights the significant challenges surrounding access to this proposed development. Again, it's our belief that given the unique situation of Chesney-Glen, Harmony, and Turner Creek Elementary with regard to access to NC 55, the impact of traffic from the proposed community on the surrounding neighborhood communities has not been adequately addressed, and we ask respectfully that the rezoning be denied. I'd just like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Michael Mitchell, and I live on Euphoria Circle in the Cary subdivision. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the council tonight. I'm here, like most, to speak out against 12 REZ-20, the rezoning of the Hernan-Burt property. While I'm not opposed to development of this parcel, I am against the proposal as it currently stands. When Harmony Community met with D.R. Horton last December, I laid forth several requests to the developers specifically regarding safety, security, and traffic congestion. I informed them that if they could address those three issues, that I would support them building any number of dwellings they wished. Suggestions were offered on how to address these issues. If they had made an honest attempt to deal with these concerns, I would be up here tonight supporting this rezoning. However, they have not dealt with these issues, and therefore, I'm here to speak out against the rezoning. While I could speak on the safety and security portion, I will leave that for others and will focus solely on the traffic issues that this rezoning will create or worsen. Turner Creek is already a congested road due to 299 homes in the Harmony community and the year-round elementary school, which also houses a YMCA after-hours program. When the Harmony Community was built, I could only assume that a traffic study was conducted, which most likely underestimated the amount of traffic on that road. I base that assumption on the fact that shortly after the community was completed, Turner Creek Road was expanded and reconfigured due to the overwhelming congestion on that road during peak hours for both the school and commuters. This widening of the road helped, but did not fully fix the problem. The traffic study conducted by the developer for the current rezoning request assigned a level of service of E to the existing condition. This is considered the second worst level of service that can be assigned to an intersection. The LOS rating required by the town, at least by my understanding, for this area is a LOS of D or better. The traffic study concludes that the rezoning of this property will increase congestion on Turner Creek Road. The tar looks at several different ways to fix this problem, but fails to offer one suggestion to improve it, and even states as such in the conclusion of their report on page 13 where I quote, "No improvements are proposed to mitigate the impact of site traffic for the Hernan Track rezoning residential development." Why did they conclude this? Why did they fail to look at additional ways to decrease traffic? In my opinion, they did so by assuming that it would be okay to ignore the town's requirement of an LOS of D or better because, well, the town can just waive the requirements, the situation is already bad, and that they claim that this will only affect vehicles exiting the site. They're simply hoping that the congestion won't be that bad. Ladies and gentlemen, hope is not a course of action. The developer has stated repeatedly that they have agreed to all conditions laid forth by the traffic study. However, there are no conditions laid forth. While I only have a few minutes left, I would just say that the town ordinance says it is mandatory that any rezon will not lessen congestion on the streets. This does not do that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Kristy Mingus-Cornell, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Dr. Joseph M. Watts. I live at 427 Euphoria, and he lives at 115 Lyric Court within the Harmony subdivision. Mr. Mayor and distinguished Town Council representatives, I first would like to thank the members of the council for the opportunity to provide input prior to your decision on the current petition, number 12 REZ-20. The aspect of 12 REZ-20 that concerns me most is rezoning 16 acres from residential 40 watershed district to a watershed protection overlay district. The current land use plan and population density was made wise by the town of Cary to protect our drinking water supply. This proposal would dramatically alter the drainage basin and surface water to a key tributary of Jordan Lake. Directly down the steep hill of these 16 acres is White Oak Creek. White Oak Creek is a direct tributary of Jordan Lake. Jordan Lake has made the news this spring and summer for its excessive nitrogen and phosphorus contaminant levels. The recent development of I-540 has already altered the natural buffers, impervious surfaces, and wetlands near White Oak Creek. The proposed rezoning would allow a large townhome development on these 16 acres, which slopes steeply into White Oak Creek. This could dramatically alter the quality of surface water entering the drainage basin. Approving this rezoning would be a second strike against this critical watershed in a year. I'm not opposed to the responsible development of this residential land, but approving a large 16-acre townhome community, which will dump directly into a key tributary of Jordan Lake, is a mistake. Unfortunately, the wetland section of the rezoning request has completely ignored the White Oak Creek drainage basin, mentioning a drained pond. This oversight shows either a lack of the knowledge of this area or an intentional omission. The town of Cary in southwest Wake County was wise to restrict the density of homes in its city planning for these acres. Please continue to protect our water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Mike Palmer. This is my wife, Monica. We are residents of 313 Amiable Loop in the Harmony subdivision, and we're here tonight to reinforce the concerns that you have heard and will hear from our fellow neighbors and members of the neighboring communities that surround the 12 RES 20 proposal. Monica and I moved to this area in 2004. We have since started, owned, and operated a real estate brokerage and property management business, so we're quite familiar with the way that this area has developed and many of the challenges in completing responsible, especially residential development, in the suburban environment of western Wake. Our primary concern with the proposal as it stands is the increased density in the community, which is not at all in character with the surrounding communities. Harmony is roughly 2 dwelling units per acre. Chesney-Glen, just to the north of the subject property, is roughly 2.8. West Park, immediately to the east, is about 2.2. And Brookstone, immediately to the east, is 2.9 dwelling units per acre. The proposal of six dwelling units per acre is a density that far exceeds the character of the surrounding community and will have a negative impact on all of the surrounding communities, including Harmony, for the many reasons that you have already heard and will continue to hear this evening. We respectfully request that the proposal as it stands be denied, and would appreciate your help in structuring future proposals such that they are in keeping with the character of the surrounding community. Would you like that? Do you have anything?
The only thing I would like to add is...
Could I give you a minute? Thank you.
The only thing that I would like to add would be that we feel that the traffic study's finding of a level of service D or F is just not acceptable for... The presence of the Turner Creek year-round school just across from the proposed development presents a unique traffic situation at this location that needs to be addressed, and we don't believe that that has been addressed properly or comprehensively. And especially during the student arrival dismissal times, the traffic is very congested right now. So if nothing is done with the traffic situation, this is only going to worsen and exacerbate the issues at this intersection. It would present a greater danger for our children during drop-off and pickup times, and the increased wait times for buses and vehicles alike during these times. So I will kindly request that you support the homeowners of Harmony, Chesney-Glen, and Brookstone in rejecting this proposal and allowing only single-family units in this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joel Fleischman. I've been here before, and I received a number of letters from the board because I live within a few hundred feet of the development that's proposed, which I'm vehemently against. And I'm not against anything being built, but I am vehemently against this high-density building that's going to go on. And I have no beef whatsoever with the builder or the people that own the property. They're in business to make money. Period. End of story. If the board gave them the license to build a nuclear waste facility and five prisons, and they built it for a bigger profit, that's their business. That's the American way. So it has to do really with you, the elected officials on the board. And there's quite a few negative things. The traffic at the school is so bad during school hours, when the kids are going to school and leaving school, that three times I had to grab kids. I got called out to direct traffic, of course, I live closest to the school, to grab kids that were literally... One actually had his sneaker run over by a car, a six-year-old, you know, et cetera. Very, very poor planning. And there was somebody on the board... And there was somebody on the board the last time that said, "Well, that's Wake County schools' problem." I got news for you, that's all of our problem. If it was your kid, or your grandchild, or your son, or daughter, you wouldn't want anything bad to happen with them, especially at a school. A lot of the people, they kept touting us to make peace with the builder, and I went to the meeting once, but I would say a third to a half the people left the meeting. A lot of the people in our development are engineers, and they came from foreign countries. And basically what they said to me, that the countries they came from were very, very corrupt countries, and that's why they came here. And they said, and now they're disappointed in this country somewhat, too. They also said that when the election comes and people that are responsible for this, because remember, this land was designated to be used in a certain way, and I have nothing against that. I'm not here because I'm against building and I'm against progress. I'm against high density for all the negative things that come with it.
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired.
Excuse me? It's up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Remy Fleischman, and I live in Harmony. And that's my dad. And I chose to come here tonight to talk about the traffic and the crime that would be coming in. And I used to be on safety patrol two years ago at Turner Creek Elementary. I had to come into class late many times just because there's so many cars coming in and it didn't come in very fast at all. And my mom goes to work every morning. She waits in traffic all the time, and I do, too, to get to school. And I don't think that should become what it is, because it's a two-way road and there's only one lane. You should either expand the lanes or not build the houses. That's what I think. And one thing I also think is that there shouldn't... If you're living near a school, it should be very safe and kids shouldn't be getting nearly run over by other cars, and they shouldn't be endangered at all. It should be a very safe area, which it's not, and because of all the traffic that's going on. That's all I want to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, town council members. My name is Antonio Rutolo. I reside in the Harmony subdivision. If you wouldn't mind terribly, I'd like to ask those from Harmony, Brookstone, and Chesney Glen to stand so they can be represented here, so you can visually see whom we've got. My contention has been and remains rooted in three fundamental factors: density, safety, and parity. The prior and modified D.R. Horton townhome development plans fail on all three counts. Much was said by several planning and zoning board members during June's meeting, which most people found disturbing and obviously lacked the planning aspect of the board's charter. Among those, the PNZ's punting of Turner Creek Elementary School access and egress safety issues in light of the failing traffic study and high density of the proposed development. They cited it as a Wake County School Board problem. Is the safety of Cary residents, especially our children, solely under Wake County School jurisdiction? Many on the PNZ board seem to think so. Harmony does not. A de facto-it-is-what-it-is attitude towards Highway 55 traffic. Some PNZ board members with no knowledge of the area informed us to expect more traffic and then contributed to the problem by approving the proposal. That's as far from planning as you can get. Several members on the PNZ board in one way or another stated that the nature of D.R. Horton's proposal or other development could be worse. So, they voted in favor of this one. How disturbing is that posture? Doesn't that counter effective planning and zoning? Shouldn't life's decisions, and in this case, decisions based upon others, be based upon what's better, not what could be worse? Furthermore, a few planning and zoning board members ignored the tenants of the land development ordinance, and that's just irresponsible. However, for those on the PNZ board who continue to vote against this ill-fitting D.R. Horton proposal, I thank them for their logic, common sense, objectiveness, and conviction. I also want to debunk some items which D.R. Horton continues to tout as their concessions to area communities, residents, and town officials. Number one, a reduction of the proposed 120 townhomes to 110, and post their defeat at the PNZ, a reduction to 94. Maximum density leads to the original 120 townhome figure. D.R. Horton intentionally aimed for the maximum, so any reduction looks like a compromise, which is exactly what they were forced to do. I urge you to look at the map when considering the LDO. How does 120, or 110, or 100, or even 90 units fit on any level? This is simply a developer tactic, not, I repeat, not, a faithfully brokered compromise. My time is running up, so I'll wrap up. No one begrudges the Hernan or Burtley families for selling their land. They seem to be fine folks with a deep local history. The problem can be boiled down to a primary issue: a density too high for the area. Thank you very much for your time.
We have enough time for maybe three speakers. I want to invite anyone forward that hasn't... That the topic hasn't been spoken on first, and then we'll continue. Anyone that wants to speak on a topic we haven't heard from. If not, we'll continue.
Respected mayor and town council members, my name is Sri Palutla. I'm a resident of 416 Chime Court in the Harmony subdivision. I'd like to express my opposition to Case 12REZ20. This rezoning is quite unique. It's unique in the sense that Turner Creek Elementary School is right next door. It is unique because the safety of schoolchildren walking and biking to school from Harmony and neighboring subdivisions will be adversely impacted if these townhomes are developed. We have repeatedly brought this concern to D.R. Horton and the Town of Cary, but nothing concrete has been presented to address these issues. Safety is already a concern at Turner Creek Elementary School. You've heard speakers before me talking about their safety concerns. I would suggest that you also look at Exhibits 1 to 3 in the attached... In the attachment that I just provided. These exhibits show that as many as 300 cars... 300 cars pull into Turner Creek Elementary School every morning. Page through the exhibits, the message that you should take home is, there are genuine safety concerns. The school is working very hard to address these safety concerns. Parents are working very hard to address these safety concerns. And there is no doubt that the proposed townhomes will aggravate these safety issues. You'll have several more kids walking to school from the townhomes, crossing Turner Creek Elementary Road, and you will see increased traffic in the carpool lanes. We will see... We will burden the school even more. The question to you is, do we really want to burden the school anymore? And I don't want to spend too much time talking about what happened, what transpired at the PNZ board meeting. We are very disappointed with the way the PNZ board deferred safety concerns to the Wake County public school system. The roads that the kids cross, Turner Creek Elementary... Turner Creek Road, Amiable Loop, Alliance Circle, do not belong to the school. They do not belong to WCPSS. They are under the jurisdiction of the Town of Cary. Turner Creek Elementary and the parents are already working very hard to keep our kids safe. The town needs to do its part. You owe it to the kids and to provide them with options to protect them and keep them safe. I'm out of time. I would encourage you to vote no on 12REZ20. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone for Public Speaks Out? That wishes to speak, that has not spoken. I see no one, so we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move into public hearings. We have the same guidelines for public hearings as we have for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes, you get five minutes. And our public hearing this evening is 13REZ08, which is Fairview Village PDD. And Ms. Granon of our staff will present the sign. Ms. Granon.
Thank you. Good evening. For your consideration is a request to rezon approximately 1.37 acres located at 42... I'm sorry, 44201010 Road. Subject property is located at the intersection of Holly Springs Road and 1010 Road, adjacent to the Orchard Knoll subdivision, and it's part of the Fairview Village Shopping Center and Planned Development District. An aerial view of the subject property shows that the site is vacant currently. Infrastructure has taken place in the vicinity and grading. The parcel was cleared some time ago, so it is predominantly unwooded and does have some infrastructure in place. Cary's land use plan designation for the property is for general commercial, and the property is located within the Fairview Mixed Use Overlay District. The existing zoning is Planned Development District, and by being within a Fairview Overlay District, the process followed for this rezoning is a PDD amendment with a preliminary development plan. There's an existing PDD which designates the property for commercial use and shows a road network and perimeter buffers. And as part of this Planned Development District plan that was approved back in 2005, there was an associated activity center concept plan, which provided a general layout of the building footprints, buffer locations, and the road network. If the applicant were to come forward with a development plan today that met with the use categories that were listed in the PDD, they wouldn't be before you for a rezoning amendment. But there was a specific list of zoning uses that were permitted within the PDD, and the light vehicular service, which is requested, was not among those items listed. So the proposed zoning is an amendment to the PDD to allow a 5,000-square-foot building with light vehicular service. There are specific items in the document: a 24-foot maximum building height, a 20-foot wide street scape along 1010 Road, a 55-foot Type A buffer with a 10-foot setback off the buffer along the eastern property line. And this is an illustration that helps define some of the aspects of the plan that's been in review with staff and the DRC for several weeks and will be presented to you tonight. The 20-foot street scape shown here is outside a reclaimed waterline easement, which is along 1010 Road. The 55-foot Type A buffer is a change from the existing plan conditions, which currently call for a 40-foot opaque buffer, but also has a wooden privacy fence in the PDD document. The applicant's proposed, rather than have the privacy fence to increase the buffer, and then to clearly state that there would be a 10-foot setback off that buffer, so it's moved it closer to LDO requirements. This is an illustration provided by the applicant to show where the buffer areas would be located. These would have to be planted buffers, as I mentioned, the site is pretty well cleared already. But this shows you the general layout and position of the proposed building, parking, and then the existing road network on the property. The applicant has provided an illustration, which is shown here. And in conjunction with this and linked to your staff report are some specific zoning conditions which they have offered: an asphalt roof with a pitched roof, the maximum building height, 90% masonry. Number of details that are shown here on this illustration. The plan, if approved, and the site plan, if submitted, would still have to be reviewed carefully by staff to make sure that it was in compliance with all our community appearance standards, but they have proposed some specific language which lets you know that this is close to what you'd be seeing if this is approved. It shows the orientation of the office portion of the building closes to 1010 Road and the building perpendicular to the street. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the rezoning request. The property was advertised in the Cary News, and the property was posted. We did receive one protest petition, shown here in blue. It is outside the 100-foot buffer area and therefore is not eligible to be considered as a valid protest. Today, we heard from two other property owners. We heard from a citizen located across the street from Orchard Knoll Drive with some concerns, and then we heard from a citizen also on Orchard Knoll Drive but half a mile down from the subject property, which is why they had expressed some concerns about notification. They were outside the 400-foot area. But we did list the concerns that had been expressed by all the neighbors, including the one that had submitted the protest petition, and those pertained to impacts of noise and light, traffic, both pedestrian and vehicular, stormwater management, the potential for crime if this use was allowed, environmental concerns, and fence removal in the buffer. According to Cary's GIS maps, the site is not impacted by any streams or floodways. Field determination would be required at the time of site plan review. Cary's Parks, Recreation, and Greenways Master Plan shows a existing street-side trail in the vicinity of the subject property. A street-side trail is not a requirement on the subject property. A five-foot sidewalk would be a requirement, but the applicant has proposed a street-side trail which exceeds LDO standards on their property as part of the preliminary development plan. 1010 Road is designated as a thoroughfare and Orchard Knoll Drive as a collector road. At this time, I would like to ask the applicant to come forward, and then staff will be available following the public hearing for any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Wakefield. I'm the new store development director for Christian Brothers Automotive. We are the applicant, and thank you for your time this evening. I know some of you would probably be rather watching preseason football, so I appreciate you giving up that time and spending it with me. A number of things I'd like to go over. Our use and our elevations. The handout that you're getting right now shows our standard prototype. By the time that we're finished talking with staff, planning and zoning boards, and if required, any additional neighborhood interface, that architecture can change. We have a number of different variations to the prototype that we can make work, that shows additional articulation if required. So this is... Although it is masonry, it's not necessarily set in stone, and we can morph to your requirements. The initial picture shows our artist's rendering, which is what was shown before. Page two is a completed building, and we do that for no other reason than this, to show you that what we build, what we say we're going to build and what we build are absolutely the same thing. In that same vein, in looking at the site plan that's listed above, we had shown, and I apologize, once the... Once we got some of the protests that had come out and we saw that the fence had been removed, that was an oversight on our part, and we humbly apologize. We want to add that fence back in. They were promised that by others. It's not a promise that we had originally made, but it's a promise we intend to keep. The other aspect is that the sidewalk along the front by right, we only have to put in five feet, but since it's part of an extensive trail system that will be coming in later, it's a town requirement sometime down the road, we would like to go ahead and put in the 10-foot fence... Or the 10-foot sidewalk now and go ahead and... It's not really a concession, it's just something we would just like to do. A number of concerns have come up. One was specific to crime. We did some checking. We've had eight break-ins in the past 32 years over 112 stores in more states than I can count. That's an extraordinarily low crime rate. A number of things that we would like to add. We don't do the overnight storage of vehicles. Not every light automotive service does that, but since we have nine bays and capacity to store cars, they go in the bays at night. So we would like to add that as a restriction to and a concession to anybody's concerns about theft or crime issues. If there's nothing to steal, you can't steal anything, and our buildings are very highly alarmed. To add to that, a number of other concerns that I'd just like to hit. Some of them were about, what do we do? What kind of work do we do? Well, we do no bodywork at all whatsoever, and we're not asking for that. So no paint, no body. We do extraordinarily little tire... We do extraordinarily little tire work, which is where you're using a lot of impact wrenches. The only time we're taking a tire on and off is either to get to the brakes or a suspension part, or in some of the newer, more fancy vehicles, they've got batteries placed in strange places, and you have to take the car, dismantle a few things to get to it. So we are not a tire center, we are not a lube shop. When your warranty runs out on your very nice car, dealers are expensive. We offer dealer-level service at Goodyear Firestone level prices. But the concerns really aren't about Christian Brothers, the concerns are about light automotive service. So I'm going to take Christian Brothers off the table and just say if anybody came in and did light automotive service, what would that look like? What kind of issues might you potentially incur or have the perception you might incur? From an environmental standpoint, this is tied to our architectural use and, back up a moment, not only to our facades, but how we build our buildings. There is no underground storage of automotive fluids of any kind, none. All of our bays have lifts that are above ground, so there is no basement area, there's no place for fluids to go. We have above-ground storage. It's double-walled, contained within a bucket system. If you added up all the fluids that we have within our shop at one time, it's roughly about 550 to 600 gallons in total. A lube shop, which is much, much smaller than we are, about a third of the size, actually holds about 1,200 to 1,400 gallons. So even though our use may be perceived as more intense from an environmental standpoint, it's much, much less intense. Also, our industry is highly regulated. Whether you're looking at us or not, the feds are, and they care intensely about what we do and how we do it. So there is oversight from agencies that have nothing to do with the town of Cary. We're also very environmentally conscious. We have a company called FCC Environmental, and any light automotive service does the very same thing. Everything is recycled, down to ethylene glycol, which is your antifreeze, which is the most carcinogenic, people don't realize this, fluid that we have. So that's picked up, all particulates are picked up, used waste oil, that's picked up. That's all taken off-site and recycled. It's not dumped anywhere. It's recycled, and you'll see it on a Family Dollar shelf as recycled oil at a greatly reduced price. All of our potential fluids, all 32 pages of them, which I have a copy of and staff has a copy as well, are below Class 3B, which is highly combustible, highly flammable. So the fire department will be very glad to know that we don't have any explosive materials. People sometimes think that we do. We absolutely don't, and nobody with light automotive service would. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, our home state, regulates everything over the Edwards Aquifer and any drinking water facility, source water facility, very, very highly. They did a study on us and realized that we were what they called a de minimis category, which is Latin for "the minimum." Simply stated, our environmental impact is equivalent to the same size of a parking lot in a Target with no activity other than driving cars on and off of it, which we were kind of shocked to find because we thought we might be a little bit higher than that. But they did the study, they did the checklist, they did the review, and we were more than compliant. We don't even have to apply for a permit with those folks. Some of the other things that were concerns were noise level. Well, fortunately, the town of Allen, Texas, required us to do a noise study. They had very stringent limits. Property line noise contributions of 65 decibels during daylight hours were simply not allowed. Honestly, we didn't know if we complied or not, so we commissioned for about $4,000 this study and found out we were extremely compliant, especially off the back of our building. The back of our building, we don't have pass-through bays. I know you don't have an elevation of the rear, but it's single-door. All the sound is projected front out into the private drive and towards the gas station, which, incidentally, an 18-wheeler standing there at idle offloading fuel for hours at a time is about 85 to 95 decibels, whereas we at a max at 24 feet off the front of the bays with an air gun going is 72 decibels. They're louder than we are. And heading backwards, we hit 50 decibels, which is about my speaking voice amplified, just like we are right now, at our property line and about 20 feet short of it. So by the time it gets to the property line, goes through the trees, this is a guesstimation, not an engineered answer, we're probably somewhere in the order of 35 to 40 decibels. We're not going to disturb the neighbors. I don't know if I can convey that well with a report or not, but the report is certainly available for anybody who wants to take a look. And the last item, we are, according to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, where ITE code is 942, which translates into this. We don't have a huge volume of vehicles going through because tires are not a major component, because we are not a lube shop, which are completely different codes. If I see 15 to 17 cars and repair those vehicles in a day, we've had a good day. If I do 22, I've had a spectacular day. Our average ticket, and I'm not getting any greens or yellows, so somebody just tell me when I'm getting close to my time. Our average ticket is about $365 to $385 per. So this is post-warranty, 60,000, 100,000-mile service, your water pump went out, things of that nature, alignments, brakes. So it's a very different set than what you might be expecting. What you might want is a coffee shop, maybe you want a Starbucks. By comparison, in the AM hours and AM exit, I'll see 12 vehicles in and out, not counting employees, and they stay all day. Your Starbucks, we'll see 138 cars, and this, just to be clear, this is without a drive-thru. We'll see 138 cars coming in in the morning, 133 going out at night. They actually do more in 30 minutes to 45 minutes than we do all day. Our use is not intense. It's very neighborhood-friendly, much more so than you would think, which is why our building actually looks more like a stone cottage with a nine-car garage than it looks like a garage with an office. It's very intentional so that we can go next to residences, which we do all over the country as a matter of fact, being next to Primrose Schools, Goddard Schools, elementary schools, and in one case, a golf course is not uncommon for us. It's about 20 out of our 112 active and open stores. If you have any questions for me specifically, I'm up here and more than willing to answer. But that is as real and as transparent as I know how to be, and once we get into planning and zoning, more staff review, we will work with them to make sure that we are compliant not only with the spirit, not only with the spirit and the letter of the statutes and ordinances, but the wishes of our neighbors as much as we can allow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Granon, you've completed your statement.
This is the public hearing, so after that's over, I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Very good. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for 13 REZO8, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time.
Hi. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm new to the area, and apparently I'm the invalid protest now. So that in itself brings up one issue with me. In one document that was displayed, it showed the 400 feet, and my property was within that, and now I've just found out that my petition's invalid. It might be worth evaluating who gets this knowledge and also what kind of impact I'm going to have.
Can I get your name, please?
Tammy Tollison. I live at 6601 Orchard Knoll Drive.
Thank you.
One thing that I noticed in what was presented is the issue of the fence. I know the fence has concerned my neighbors when it was originally removed from the plans, and then it was stated that they want to add it back in, which I think is great, but I think that should be communicated to my neighborhood and the entire neighborhood then given another chance to speak on the matter. Once we have that, are we going to get it, are we not? We'd like to see that in writing, just so we know what to expect. The issue of the noise, that's my main complaint and also something I admittedly need to do more research on. We are actually zoned to Apex while the property will be located in Cary. I do need to do my research and see what the allowable decibel levels are in each area. But I work 60 hours a week. I am a professor at Wake Tech College and at Campbell University, and thankfully, my jobs let me do a lot of work at home. But in order to achieve what I want to in the classroom and stay on top of my field, I do do a lot of work at home, and I want to be sure that the noise coming into my neighborhood is not something that's going to disturb my work or disturb my neighbors and the enjoyment of our properties. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is David Dwyggen. I live at 6501 Orchard Knoll Drive. That's fronts on State Road 1010. I'm not the property adjacent to the site, but I'm just to the east. I had three things, or at least two when I came in. The first was the fence, and I wanted to see it put back in in addition to the proposed buffering before I would support this, and so I was glad to hear what he had to say. The second thing that I want to talk about is something I didn't really have on my list when I came in, but as a result of hearing him say that he wants to put in 10-foot sidewalks, I'm here to say that as a neighbor, I don't want to see that. I don't think it's necessary. I think it's overkill. I don't think there is the foot traffic in the area to support that kind of, or as a requirement going to the park to the east. The sidewalk at the corner is five foot, the sidewalks to the west are five foot. And to take it more personal, a recently built sidewalk just behind our house to the west is 10 feet. And it's, I mean, it's like a runway, airport runway, with nobody on it, ever. Okay? And so now you're going to put another 10 foot to the west, or yes, to the west. All right? And whenever something happens in between, there's going to be pressure to put a 10-foot there now because we've got one on both sides. And what I'm afraid of what's going to happen then is that my 21-inch cedars, I have two of them, and stretch about 60 feet tall, are going to be cut down for the sake of 10-foot sidewalks, which nobody will use. Okay? So basically, I don't want to see 5, 10-foot sidewalks here. The third one has to do with light and noise pollution, and while it may seem unreasonable, my request would be that there not be any, at least at my property. Now, what he has said about noise pollution sounds encouraging. If it's accurate, you know, 35 decibels being normal conversation level at that eastern property line, then that sounds good. It probably won't impact me. It seems kind of unlikely, just face value, because you're running machinery, which running compressors, and even behind concrete and steel, you know, some noise is going to come out. So that's the sort of thing where I would sort of have to hear it to believe it. I would just really ask that the developer and planners work to make sure that there's no introduction to noise. And the context for that just has to do with the growth or the occurrence of recent Cary projects in the area. We deal with State Road 1010 and the Fairview Fire Department, which is, you know, no doing of Cary's, of course, but Cary's project has brought in the kangaroo at the corner. We get noise from that even. You would think it's pretty far away, but we hear noise, music and so on there. The Swift Creek Parallel Forest Main Project did quite a bit of tree or damage to our trees, which has increased the noise coming from across the road or and the road. Light pollution is a bigger concern really for me. In recent projects from Cary, we have a subdivision to our east and the streetlights that come from it, the kangaroo to the west and the lights that come from it, and with the tree damage to our trees and more lights coming in from the firehouse to the north, I can literally walk out at night and I don't need a flashlight. I can navigate my whole yard at night. It's like living in the land of the noonday sun kind of thing, especially in the winter. I mean, it's just a red cast over my whole yard, and I would, it seems unreasonable perhaps, but I would like to say that if this was going to be approved, that there be no additional light impact on our property. Okay? And thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing?
I see no one, so we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or concerns. It's our intent to send this to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Ms. France.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Is this facility heated and air-conditioned in the service bay area?
The office area is heated and air-conditioned. The actual bays themselves are only heated.
Okay, so the doors will be open in the summer?
Right. I know that's what you're getting at, but yes, sir.
Yeah. Clarify, fence or no fence?
Fence. And we'll put it in writing, whatever we need to do. Yes, sir. We were doing the fence.
You state no, or that all overnight storage would be inside?
Yes, sir.
And that you have nine bays to accommodate that?
Correct.
I mean, I own France Automotive in downtown Cary.
I drove past it. It's a nice facility.
Thank you. I'm going to have nine cars dropped off overnight tonight.
Yeah.
So when you say that there's no overnight storage, that's vehicles that were taken in that day?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Air compressor inside or outside?
It's inside. As a matter of fact, if you look at the little bump out there at the bottom, it's completely encased.
Okay.
Three-inch steel door, all that good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I love my shop, but I don't know that I want to live next door to it.
Yes, sir.
Well, I live there anyway.
Yes, you do.
Trying to sleep would be a little bit challenging. And then just trying to be, for all transparency and stuff, you say no flammable fluids. Do you not clean fuel injection systems, use brake cleaners, starting fluids?
We're talking about Class 3B, the highly, we're talking about the exploding combustibles. Of course, everything that's automotive, just about all of it is flammable. So don't mean to overstate, but as far as something that, sorry, 53. That's much better. No, obviously, automotive fluids, there are many of them that are combustible, but there are different varying flashpoints. The MSD sheets are very clear that, and you know what I'm talking about here, as to what is flammable, what its flashpoint is, and what explodes. So if the neighbors are concerned about, or in any way, shape, form, or fashion, is this thing going to go up like something from an A-Team episode? Well, the answer is, of course, no. And yes, it's silly to state it that way, but it kind of makes the point. There's not going to be some fireball or something of that nature. Plus, with it being a masonry building and the distance from residences, they're in really good shape.
And then in regards to the environmental concerns, I actually look at auto repair and service as we help the environment, because we make the cars run cleaner and we make them leak less.
Yeah.
So I think those are all good things.
It's great. You're hired.
So just had a few clarifications there. With no bay doors on the backside of the building, the backside of the property will be pretty quiet.
Yes, sir.
But 15 to 17 cars a day, seriously, that's it?
Yeah. And, you know, here's the other part. We also are closed on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Monday through Friday is more than enough.
Yeah, exactly. It's more than enough. We have a shuttle car, which is another reason why we have so few vehicles coming in and out. Now, that, just for full disclosure, that's specific to us and that's maybe something you do as well. Not every light automotive does that, so we would be willing to add that as a restriction.
As a business owner, I'm just, I'm looking at this beautiful building.
Yeah.
Great architecture for an automotive shop and stuff, by the way. I'm looking at the equipment inside, that beautiful floor and everything. This is probably about a $2 million expenditure for whoever buys it.
With the land cost, the development cost, this one's going to come in. Just full disclosure, we're very transparent. We're going to come in at somewhere around 1.865.
Okay, I was close. You're going to need more than 15, 17 cars a day to make that payment. That's all I can say.
Other questions or comments?
Excuse me. If I could be so rude as to interrupt, it's important that we point out that some of the things that have been presented are not zoning conditions.
Right.
So I just really want to drive that home. While this has some wonderful business model attributes to it, we really do need to remember to focus on the specifics which can be enforced and implemented with zoning conditions. A solid brick wall where the bays do not go through to the rear of the building, that's specific, that's a zoning condition, that's enforceable. So, you know, I was hearing some things that made it sound like a really good business, but exactly how many cars they have, things that we can't lock in and what they're going to charge customers. Well, it's interesting, it's not pertinent to the zoning case, so.
I was going to basically say the same thing, but also, the concern that I have is that the zoning that we give this goes with the land, it doesn't go with the business. And oftentimes, when we hear an applicant tell us the great aspects of his business, that's very nice. However, if something should happen, that this business does not thrive and continue, we now have a piece of land that is zoned for light service automotive or light automotive service, and that the next tenant may or may not be respectful to the surrounding community. And so we have to make the decision whether or not we think that is appropriate for this land being adjacent to a neighborhood. And I was going to ask you, Don, what you thought about automotive service next to a neighborhood, because I think you have a neighborhood fairly close to you, but...
Yeah, but we're also separated by a rail.
By a railroad track.
Yeah.
Which, how loud is that?
When the train comes by, we know it.
Yeah. So, I mean, what is your thought on that? Because when I look at this, and, you know, Christian brothers aside, when I just look at the use adjacent to a neighborhood, I thought, holy cow, I mean, I would freak out of that.
It's very common. I mean, Maynard, Bull Tire on Maynard Road is an example. You've got the one on Cary Parkway, it was a merchants. I'm not sure what it is today. It may still be a merchants. We have a lot of them throughout town that back up, or, you know, to residential neighborhoods. It's not uncommon. Whereas, you know, my building, for example, we've got doors on both sides. Having that wall on the backside, that in itself is killing the noise that's happening inside the building for the residential, you know, on the other, to the east. It just doesn't stand out as odd to me at all. I mean, it happens, we have it all throughout Cary.
Okay.
You know, the Volvo, Bull Tire, you know, where else?
Atlantic Tire by Weatherstone.
Maybe that's not that close to Weatherstone. I mean, Atlantic Tire has a shopping center between itself and Weatherstone, right? I mean, it's not, it's not adjacent, like the bike shop is adjacent to Weatherstone. More so than like Atlantic Tire.
They're going to have stuff behind them.
It's across the street.
Their residential behind them.
Well, with respect to that, since you brought that up, what are the noise ordinance requirements? Because I have great affinity for people who work at home, and I need it quiet. So I am, I'm right in line with that, with that citizen.
It is, I was looking to see if someone was here from our police department tonight, but I believe it's 60 decibels during, is that correct? Yeah, 60 decibels to adjacent residential property.
Higher than I expected. 7:00 AM to...
60 is not loud.
I can verify that unless there's someone here.
I think it was 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, maybe? Something like that?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Bailey.
This is Deputy Bailey.
Thanks for checking. Hey. Come on up.
We can get you those specifics and it'll be reflected in, but I'm pretty certain the hours for the higher level is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's every day but Sunday and holidays is when that's the requirement, and it's measured at the property line of the adjacent property.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, the better way to deal with the noise question is, how does that noise compare to a leaf blower and a weed whacker as their neighbors, you know, when they're going on? So, you know, I think it's kind of a neutral.
Well, I exactly understand where you're coming from, but a weed whacker, after it's done whacking the weeds, it's done. Right? But when you've got the car and the compressors and everything going for, you know, from when they open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that could, I just, I definitely, you know, there's so many more people that work from home now. I think it's our sanctuary, it's always been our sanctuary after 5:00, but for some of us, it's also our sanctuary all day. You know, it's our, it's our business, it's our livelihood, so I don't want to impact that.
Well, I'm telling you, an air compressor taking a bolt off a tire isn't going to take eight hours, and I can tell you that your neighbors working on a yard are going to be working out there a lot longer. And if you're working at home, you better have a set of headphones to cover up the noise, because that's going to drive you looney. A lot more than 30 seconds.
Do you leave with one of your neighbors, Jack?
I'm telling you that the culture in Cary is, we all have our dual weed blowers, our dual weed whackers, and our noisy mowers, and it's just part of living here. And it's a heck of a lot noisier than a place with enclosed bays. That's all. I'm just trying to put it in perspective.
Other comments?
You said this was a use that wanted to, they were adding to, it's the only reason it's here. Can you give me some examples of some of the other uses that could go on the site today and we'd never see it, never have a sight of it?
Yes, today, they could come in with a kennel with indoor operation only.
So dogs don't make noise, right? Yeah?
They could have a veterinary hospital with indoor kennel, a bank with a drive-through. They could have a nightclub or a bar.
Okay.
With outdoor operation.
So, you can stop. Stop. You've helped me make my point. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I would like to just clarify for the citizen who filed the protest petition, if you don't mind, just to help explain that.
Please do.
I think that would be beneficial. That citizen's property was located within 400 feet of the subject property. State law requires us to notify within 100 feet, but we exceed that to make sure that we don't miss anybody. And then the eligible area for the protest petition is just within the 100 feet. So for the benefit of the citizen, we like to make sure that we've included their comments and their concerns, but by state law, it's not eligible for a protest petition.
Thank you. If there are no more questions or concerns, this will go to a Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and do we have a date?
What we will do is communicate with the applicant. Sounds like they wanted to introduce a new zoning condition regarding the fence, which certainly something we can do. And we'd also like to talk with our Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Department and make sure we've got clear understanding about that street-side trail. So with a new condition, we would have another public hearing, and that would give adjacent property owners a chance to speak again to those issues. But we'll schedule it as soon as possible.
Okay. Jerry, go ahead.
Ms. Granton, one last question. The citizen said that she was in Apex.
She has an Apex mailing address. She's in Wake County. She's in our land use plan, but she has Wake County zoning currently.
Land use plan ETJ?
She's, she's not in our ETJ. She's in our long-range land use plan, very low-density residential, but not annexed into the city limits and not in the ETJ at this time.
Okay.
It's an Apex address.
Apex mailing address.
County zone, county...
County zoning.
And for people that don't know, the address is determined by the Postmaster General.
Correct.
As Ms. Robinson chased down so many years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to land development discussion items. Our first item is Item F1, the Herndon Burke Property Annexation, Rezoning and Comprehensive Plan Consistency Statement. Ms. Beerman of our staff will present the staff presentation. Then we're going to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board representative on their recommendation on the rezoning, and council may take action this evening. Ms. Beerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to annex and apply the initial Town of Cary zoning to 15.78 acres. It's located at the northwest corner of NC 55 and Turner Creek Road. This is a vicinity map. You have heard a number of comments from the Public Speaks Out section of the agenda tonight. The property to the west of the site is the, you can see the Harmony subdivision. The area to the north is Chesney Glen, and to the south is Turner Creek Elementary School. As I mentioned, there's also an associated annexation petition with this request, so this just gives the context of the location with regard to the current corporate limits. This table summarizes the process to date for this case. You first heard the public hearing on October 25th and referred the item to the Planning and Zoning Board. The Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on April 15th and recommended denial by a vote of six to three. On May 23rd, this was brought back to you and was, you referred this back to P&amp;Z at that time because there were revised conditions offered by the applicant where they reduced the number of, the maximum number of units. On June 17th, the Planning and Zoning Board conducted another public hearing and at that time recommended approval by a vote of six to three. And then tonight is back before you for a decision. I'd also point out that as we went through this process, there were a number of changes to the zoning conditions, and those are summarized in your staff report through that process. I won't go through those unless you have any questions. The existing zoning on the site is Highway District, which takes up about 2/3 of the site and residential 40. These are currently both Wake County zoning districts. The residential, the Highway District portion of the site allows a variety of residential and non-residential uses. The R40 portion is similar to Wake County, or to Town of Cary R40, and would allow residential at a density of about one unit per acre. The proposed, this just again shows the proposed zoning districts, or existing zoning districts. The proposed zoning is residential multifamily, or multifamily conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions include a list of permitted uses that would allow several uses that are listed in the group living category, or up to 94 duplex or townhome units, or up to 68 patio homes, or several uses that are in the parks and open space category. In addition, there are zoning conditions for additional setbacks and buffers along the northern property line, additional masonry along the frontage of the buildings, privacy fencing along the western property line, a requirement for two-car garages, and road improvements as recommended in the traffic study that was performed. And this is an exhibit that was included by the applicant to clarify the buffer conditions that are applicable along the northern property line. With regard to the land use plan, the site is designated for medium-density residential use in the land use plan. This is three to eight units per acre. This designation was put in place in 2004 with adoption of the Southwest Area Plan, and there is a note on the plan that applies to this area that states that medium-density residential development should be separated from existing single-family neighborhoods by at least 100 feet. And this, this is accomplished with the additional buffer requirements along the northern property line that are offered as a condition by the applicant. This shows a right-of-way, recorded right-of-way reservation between the subject property and the adjacent subdivision. This, this reservation area actually goes across a property that's owned by the applicant and sets up a scenario where in the future, if the intervening property is developed, that an additional connection to NC 55 could be made. There are a number of neighborhood concerns that have been expressed, many of these you heard again tonight as well. The safety of pedestrian access to the Turner Creek Elementary School, traffic safety related to access on 55, compatibility with the existing neighborhood, impacts of drainage and erosion on properties to the north, and access concerns related to the potential for the future road connection to Repor Drive. And with that, I would ask Mr. Swanson to present the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you've been told, our vote, our recommendation was a vote of six to three for approval of this case. We had a fairly vigorous discussion and heard many of the same concerns from local residents that you heard. Particularly, we heard an awful lot of concern around the traffic around the school, and spent a good deal of time talking about that, that we heard some concerns about a need to have single-family detached housing because that's compatible with the local neighborhood. We heard some school capacity concerns, and I want to make a note here because I think there may be a confusion. When we talked about something being a Wake County problem, we were, Wake County Schools problem, I think what we were talking about is school capacity. There was a question raised during our public hearing about school capacity, and I think the comment that was made about being a Wake County Schools problem specifically had to do with planning for schools' capacity, and I think we actually had a discussion about the fact that not knowing what schools you're going to be assigned to was very difficult for us to determine whether, what the impact of this development would be on schools' capacity. I don't think that the intent of that comment had anything to do with suggesting that traffic issues were a Wake County problem. We had, the board had several concerns. As I said, traffic impacts, and we did discuss at length what the difference between having single-family detached houses here would be versus multifamily, and we looked a little bit at the data. And while there is a difference, well, certainly if you have fewer homes, you're going to have less traffic, it appeared from the traffic data that it wasn't that significant a difference. Several of our members frankly just preferred lower density, just because of the proximity of single-family detached. They thought that it would be nice to have it contiguous. But other members cited the fact that you're transitioning to a major highway, Highway 55, and using MDR. In particular, a little bit higher density closer to the highway did make some sense because frankly, you like the buffer uses between high-access, high-use highways and The applicant did offer a concession to put a sidewalk on the Schools' property to make it easier for students getting from Harmony onto the school. However, we did point out that that's really not an enforceable zoning concession. It's a nice thing, but there's nothing that we can do in zoning to enforce that. It was observed that this, that our land use plan has this property down for MDR, medium-density residential, and this request is not at the high end. It's, it's not at the low end either. It's, you know, in the upper middle of MDR, so it wasn't necessarily inconsistent with our land use plan. And I believe that, oh, the things that we saw different from our first vote, I could understand why you might ask, well, why'd you go six to one against the first time? And, or six to three against the first time, and then six to three for the second time? And the answer to that is, we saw a drop in density, significant increases to the buffers, the addition of a two-car garage stipulation, which we think is likely to make certain that the property's value, the individual property values are higher, therefore more compatible with property values in the adjacent neighborhood. And so those are the major issues. And then we saw some, some other minor concessions as well, this sidewalk that was offered. And that pretty well summarizes, I think, our discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any questions? Ms. Swanson, if you can, if you can sit down.
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry. So, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but in the essence of that discussion, the lingering concern for the dissenting vote was still, you know, these unresolved traffic issues? I mean, am I oversimplifying that?
I think the lingering concern had to do with traffic and density. Density and compatibility of density with the neighboring neighborhoods.
Okay.
Most certainly, we heard an awful lot about traffic, and any time you have traffic issues around a school, you get a little heartburn. I think we all had a little heartburn with that. As you know, we tend to fall back on the traffic study data, and that we did in this case, and said, well, you know, what else could be developed in this property, and what would be the traffic impact? And what's the comparison? And when we looked at single-family detached, there just wasn't that big a difference. And so that's kind of how the traffic thing got mitigated in only some members' minds. And then the density thing was, was, I think several of our members had that from, a hold over from the first time we heard it.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we begin in deliberating on this, it's important to point out that by law, and Ms. Simpson, please correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot vote on the rezoning unless it's annexed into the town. And so... And so as we deliberate, it would be good for the audience, especially the developer, if we express our intention so that they can get an idea. Then I'm going to ask the developer to come down and say, do you want this property still to be annexed? And they can decide at that time.
That's a good idea.
How to proceed. Any, anything to add, Ms. Simpson?
No, I think you're right, Mayor, and that sounds fine.
Okay, so I'll open it up.
I'll go ahead and start. You know, whenever we hear from residents, especially a lot of residents like this, there are some questions that are raised that really talk about process. So before we begin talking about this particular site, I did want to talk a couple, about a couple of process things. The first thing has to do with the proposal for medium-density residential here, and I want everybody to understand that our land use plan in Cary is our guiding document that we use to assess proposals and their validity for the community. Right now, the town is going through a process to take a look at our land use plan and make any revisions to it. So I say this not only for the residents in this audience here today, but for anyone who lives adjacent to a vacant parcel of land. Now is the time to get involved in the community and talk to the community, talk to the town about what you hope to have in the future. Because we're going to be evaluating this one in light of its compatibility with our land use plan. And if the land use plan had said single-family or low-density, single-family, which it sounds from the numbers that one of the residents shared with us, it sounds like you all are in low-density residential neighborhoods. Had this been on the land use plan for a single, excuse me, low-density residential, then this application would not have been compatible, and this would be a very different conversation. So that's the first thing I want to share. I want to encourage all of you to do the, to participate in the Imagine Cary process, and I've sent the link to several people already. But if you have not gotten that and want information about it, contact me or any of the other council members, and we'd be happy to share that with you. The other question had to do with permitted uses because someone asked, why are they even listing certain things as permitted uses? We know D.R. Horton's not going to build that. The reason why is that although D.R. Horton is the potential purchaser of this land, the owners of the land don't want to pin themselves down too narrowly to one use because if this deal should fall through with D.R. Horton, they want to be able to market the property to some other company that could develop it. And that's why they have in there the patio homes and why they have some of the other group homes.
Group homes.
Group homes and some of the other things because they want to leave their options open, and that's why the permitted use is there. One of the other questions or concerns that was raised was, had to do with the number of units that was originally requested and then this dropped down to a lower density. And I think a lot of people probably felt suspicious about that, like, oh, my gosh, you know, these guys are duping us and this seems so wrong. It's not uncommon for an applicant to request the maximum number of units that's permitted under the land use plan designation. The reason why is for the reason I just mentioned. If D.R. Horton wanted to walk away, the owners would want to be able to market that property to somebody else, and of course, they'd want to be able to market it for its highest value, which would be the maximum number of units. So it's very common for us to get that. It has to do with the bottom dollar. And then as feedback comes in and they're trying to pacify angry neighbors and that kind of thing, they'll often come down and go, well, you know, we really couldn't even get more than ninety-four units anyway, so let's go ahead and say ninety-four. So that's why it is, why you saw that happen. It's, it's just very, very common, and I think it has more to do with marketability and potential, the desire to potentially market that property in the future than it does with being unscrupulous or anything like that. With that being said, I think I touched on the, the concerns that were raised that I thought maybe were worth addressing. The reservations that are still outstanding with the residents obviously have to do with the safety around the school, the congestion leaving Turner Creek, and I feel for anyone who's been behind a school bus at a red light turning red, because it just drives you absolutely insane that they won't turn right on red. So I, I feel for anybody in that situation. For those people living in Chesney Glen, this is a very serious issue for them turning out of their neighborhood. It's extremely dangerous. I have the privilege of not having to do that on a daily basis, but I've gone over there enough to know how dangerous it feels, and it's beyond me why we still have not met warrants for a signal there, but I understand the concerns there. And then finally, just the impacts of high-density development. And in one of the questions, conversations that I had with one of the residents, I asked the question, is this an issue of you guys don't want this, I shouldn't even say high-density, it's really a medium-density, you don't, you don't want ninety-four units, and so you are extrapolating what you think might be the, the ill effects of it, and therefore you're opposed? Or are you, did you immediately say, oh, my word, ninety-four units, this is, these are the implications, and so you're opposed to the, the impact of ninety-four units so much, so much as the ninety-four units? And I think the answer is that there's a mix. I mean, some of you are just opposed and concerned about having a denser community. Other people are just concerned about the implications of it. I would like to hear what my council colleagues have to say about this, but in general, in looking at this and having looked at a lot of applications over the years, it looks to me like there's still work that could be done on this to, to modify this project to be something that's acceptable to the residents where you all would have the assurance that whatever gets built is going to be compatible with your communities. So my desire would, would be to actually table this and work on it longer, but I want to hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay. Who's next? Mr. Yurha?
We've heard a lot about density tonight, six units per acre, which is what it would be with ninety-four townhomes. It fits within medium-density residential rather neatly. I'm not happy about that. Personally, I'd rather see twenty-four single-family detached homes, just to pick a number, rather than ninety-four townhomes. But even if that were changed, that alone would not allow me to vote for this under the present circumstances. Because my concern is traffic safety more so than, than density. Because even if there were, and we'll use that number again, just twenty-four families with the potential of exiting onto Highway fifty-five and making a left to get to RTP in the morning, instead of ninety-four, in my opinion, it would be twenty-four too many. We heard Brookstone mentioned as one of the subdivisions tonight in the area. That's where I live. And I live in Brookstone on the east side of fifty-five primarily because I can make a right to get to RTP in the morning. We looked eighteen years ago, when fifty-five was nowhere near what it is today, and the traffic was nowhere near what it is today. We looked on the other side, Chesney Glen and some other places along there, even some in Apex, truth be told.
How ed, how could you ed?
We didn't know what we were doing back then. And we felt we were taking our life in our hands trying to make a left at rush hour to get to RTP. I don't know how the people today who live there do it, especially when it's their only way out. A right-in, right-out, I suppose, on Highway fifty-five would help in some ways, but we learn by reading through the executive summary of the traffic study and also, which is echoed by, by some of the speakers tonight, that people who'd want to make the left, instead of making that right-in and right-out, they couldn't make a left, they would go out on Turner Creek to the light and then make a left there. Makes sense. But if that would exacerbate the problem, the traffic problem we have already on Turner Creek with the school and the children, we don't want that either. I've been caught up twice in the traffic at pick-off or pickup or drop-off times at, at Turner Creek, at the school. There are kids in the street going back and forth. There are cars parked and double-parked. It was chaotic. I have to assume it's that way normally, not just on the couple of times I was over there. It was scary. It reminded me of New Jersey every day where I used to live. And I'm not used to that in Cary, and I don't think we want that in Cary, and I certainly don't think we need to make it worse. So the bottom line is, I got to ask myself, if we approve this the way it is right now on paper, and if there was a wreck on Highway fifty-five, somebody trying to make a left, or if there were injuries there, or if somebody had to go out to Turner Creek and there were injuries to a school or something, would I be able to say to myself, well, I approved this because it met the letter of the law? I mean, we followed our requirements? Or would I feel that it was my responsibility? Would I feel some kind of guilt? And I think the answer is the latter. So with apologies to the applicant, who I know is complying with the traffic study by having the plan the way it is today, I just feel that I'm not sitting here to administer to a traffic study or to an ordinance, but I'm here instead to protect our citizens. And I really think the access issues need to be fixed before I could vote yes on this. So you mentioned tabling and giving time to fix? I'd be for that or, or anything but for voting for it tonight.
Okay. Ms. Harkett.
Thank you, Mayor. I always liked the way Don brings his professional life to bear at the table, to provide context for issues, and you guys, I tend to do the same thing, and you may get tired of me using medical analogies all the time, but too bad, I'm going to use another one. You know, in medicine, our first mission is to do no harm, and I feel that approving this plan as it currently stands does not follow this philosophy. If, and now I would add to that, if Highway fifty-five is indeed what it is, then this plan as proposed will make it even more like what it already is, and I know that is not our goal and that is not our intention. It's unacceptable to do that. And then the third thing I'd say is that there's just no way around the fact that this plan as it's currently proposed compounds an already significantly adverse traffic situations at Turner Creek Elementary School and for neighborhood residents attempting to enter Highway fifty-five. You know, on its own, this is not a bad plan, but we cannot take it in isolation from how the surrounding area has developed and the resultant traffic impacts already being experienced. You know, we pride ourselves in Cary on being concerned about and having a reputation for public safety and what a safe community we are to live in, and I feel like this, adding this, if we were to approve this plan as it's currently presented, we would not be true to that reputation. I would certainly support additional work on this proposal to address the things that I've mentioned and that everyone else has mentioned.
Well, I, I'm in a unique position because I've seen this development grow up because I was on the Planning and Zoning Board in 2005 when the Turner Creek Plan Development came before us, and I was one of the two people on P and Z that actually denied the Turner Creek, so. And it's not because I didn't want to see Harmony built. My concerns at that time were the fact that we had three hundred homes that were eventually going to go there on one road with one access. And I could just see the problems that could potentially come up as we're seeing now, not just with the single point of access, but also with the close proximity to the school and the amount of cars that would be generated as well as now, since many of us have kids, we've seen how those carpal lines have gotten longer and longer, and they've impacted the ability for kids to safely get to school in some other way besides the way we would absolutely love them to be on their bikes or walking or whatever, what have you. I, it, I think that young Ms. Fleishman said it best that, you know, you should feel safe, especially around the school when you're walking to school, and I don't feel like we would do the best service to all of our citizens, especially the ones who came here before, who built their homes, to put in something like this so close to them that would harm their, harm their way and quality of life, and especially the, the traffic mitigation or traffic issues that won't be mitigated, in fact, will do more harm. So I am on that same page.
There's three of us left. Who wants to go next?
I'll go next. I really appreciate all the folks that came out to speak tonight and the polite and thoughtful manner that you've conveyed your concerns. I really enjoy hearing how it genuinely impacts you. Chain emails and stuff do nothing to influence my decision one way or the other. Hearing your personal story does. I see some of the negatives with the proposal. I see some positives with the proposal. And I, and I would commend the applicant as well for making an effort over the last ten, eleven months to meet with the residents and try to iron out some of the details while taking site constraints and everything else into consideration. I think they've had like ten, eleven meetings with the residents. I think that's to be commended, I really do. I think they've tried very hard to craft a plan that not only works for them, but works for the adjoining and surrounding communities, something that everybody can live with and something that everybody can ultimately be proud of. Yeah, maybe townhomes aren't exactly as compatible as all the other single-family homes, but I don't know that we plan for everything out here to be single-family homes, which is why it's MDR on our land use plan, you know? We expected medium-density. You know, some of the positives that come out to me, it's, you know, roughly six units an acre, it's a little bit above the middle scale on medium-density, complies with the land use plan, current zoning absolutely does not comply with the land use plan, does provide a good transition from the highway to the single-family residential behind it. It's kind of similar to what we have at Old Carpenter, Davis Village, Preston Village, some of those areas. Provides another access road to the subdivision behind it that only has one. I totally agree with you. I mean, three hundred homes in one road, I don't know how y'all do it. I mean, I think it's, I don't know, we'd approve that today. I mean, I just.
We wouldn't.
Yeah, it's.
We've changed our standards over the years. I mean, we have a lot of neighborhoods like Rick's B Farm that, a lot of homes.
Right, right, right. So that's a challenge that this applicant has to deal with. It's not necessarily their fault, and so I can sympathize there. I think staff and NC DOT support the other access. I think that's fabulous. They did, you know, conduct a traffic study even though they didn't have to, and they've agreed for all the mitigations and things identified in that study, you know? I kind of almost get the feeling we're expecting this project, well, I don't want to say to fix the problems on Highway fifty-five. I know we don't want this project to make them worse. So I, I kind of feel like they've been crammed into a tight little box that makes it really hard to, to work in. They've exceeded our masonry requirements, design guidelines, they've gone above and beyond that. They have reduced the density, you know? And then the comments to that, I, I'm not going to argue. I think y'all make a fair, valid point. I really do. Let's see, what were some of my other notes? They've worked with Turner Creek Elementary School to get the sidewalk in. I think that is phenomenal. I, you know? And then just some of the changes that they made. I mean, they, they turned a P and Z board that originally was six to three against it to get a six to three for vote, you know? And we've got a couple of members that they're kind of going to vote against it, most anything controversial, so it's kind of closer to unanimous to me. So those are some of the reasons I could vote for this, but I'm, I'm kind of of the agreement that, yeah, I could maybe use a little more work, put it back in the oven for a few more minutes and see if we can cook it and get it a little bit better. Those are my comments.
Mr. Smith?
Actually, Don, you hit on a lot of what I was going to say, just a couple of thoughts. In some, some, first of all, after looking at it closely, it's a darn good plan. It is. And as you said, Don, they've, they've worked hard to make a lot of accommodations, and the fact that through that, a jury of their peers, so to speak, the P and Z, actually changed from six-three against to six-three for, I think is a statement. Here's my concern about tabling. I mean, I think we should, but I think we should give some directions with that tabling. And I think, as you said, it isn't all on, on the developer. And what I would appeal to is that the community out there that has so eloquently made their concerns known, that you look long and hard about your alternatives. I saw some demeaning comments about making this decision because it could be worse. Well, folks, it could be worse. You better start looking at the potential gift horse here of a well-thought-out plan. You look around at any pud in, in Cary. You look around at any PUD in Cary, and the entrances, and the, and the entrances to those PUDs have multifamily, or they have townhomes, have something that transitions to the inner. And if you talk to any realtor in those 300 homes that live out there, they'll tell you it's not gonna hurt your values. And that's the part that's kinda galling, that somebody, those, those facts just don't corroborate when you look at history. Sometimes values go down during transition, while something's being built. But once it's done, if it's of the quality of the, of the surrounding area, and so forth, it, it actually enhances. So in the end, where I think we're all in agreement, is we've got a traffic problem and a safety problem out there. And somehow, I think we have to come to grips with it isn't just that developer that has to step up. And I think whatever we can do, you know, I think, Jennifer, you and I were talking once about, we had this argument about it doesn't meet warrant. And yet, you were talking about going out to Western Carolina, and there's a traffic light next to a shopping center parking lot.
For a hotel.
Yeah, for a hotel.
For a Best Western.
That doesn't meet warrant, you know? So things can change, and I think there has to be concerted effort. What would be nice is if there was recognition of the value of this proposal by the community, and that together, between the developer and the neighboring communities, there'd be some action applied, you know, to our, our state legislators to look at this, and just look at it in a, in a common sense way, that we're, you know, we don't wanna hurt children. We have a school there. Sometimes things are unique, and to hide behind rules that say it doesn't meet warrant, this is probably one of these cases that doesn't. I think we oughta do something about it. But boy, I think it'd be a lot more powerful if we're doing it with three units, working in concert together, you know, the, the whole community out there, us, as a, as a local organization, and the developer. I don't think we should give up on a quality development going there. And I, what I hope don't hap, what I hope doesn't happen, is that we get caught in the, the nuances of the details of that development. Folks, you can trust the next development that might be better. You can trust that a different council will look at things differently. But, you know, I can tell you, if you look at a lot of the developments that have come by, this has been going on now for 10 months. We saw this, you know, we're almost a year. There's a dedicated effort to work with the community, to work with them for something that's going to be a good neighbor. And I just appeal that if, as we put this on, you know, I see the, that we're going to, you know, table this, I, I'd like to just see us all work together, because I think we can all come out of this with a win-win. I mean, that's just my hope.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And, and before I make my comments, I'd go ahead and bite the applicant down. And while the applicant's coming down, I'm, everything's already been said, so I'm gonna summarize, summarize my thoughts, which have already been said. My concerns are density and traffic, if we can do anything with that. And I really don't like the townhome product. If we can do something other than townhomes, I would appreciate that. And with that said, is the applicant here?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to just not rebut, but kinda reinforce. I mean, I think most of you know, I'm not a real fan of the townhomes, also.
Right, and that's my comment.
And, and I, and I, you know, I think it's one of these, we're kinda like in violent agreement.
Yes.
But at the same time, there has been a proven track record that if it's of a certain density, you know, not 20 units to an acre, 25 units to an acre, but six, you know, you can make that fit into the, the thing, into, that blends with, with the, the community around it. And I'm not taking issue with your comment, in some ways I agree with you.
I agree with you.
But I do think we have, you know, I do think we have an opportunity here to be, have a win-win.
Yeah, and what we, what we've seen is that it is often not the density, it's the quality of the community. That if you put in a very high-quality, but more dense community, it enhances the neighborhood more so than putting in a less dense, lower-quality product. So that's, you know, that's where the focus needs to be, is, you know, is making sure that the, the parameters that are offered by the applicant are going to lead towards a good quality product. I'll, I'll wait until after the applicant talks.
And as the applicant comes to the mic, I would just tell you that it seems to be very clear, we're unanimous, that we think this could use some more work, even though you've done a lot. And would like to hear your thoughts on the annexation and the rezoning piece, how you would like to proceed, and then we'll make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From where I was sitting, it was sounding like there was a building consensus, that we, we should defer this case and continue working on it. And we're happy to do so. I, I think one of the things that I want you all to hear from us, as well as the folks who are here to hear from us, is D.R. Horton is committed to providing a safe project over there. Make no mistake. You heard the discussion related to offering the sidewalk adjacent to the school. That was specifically to address an existing safety issue. That D.R. Horton really has no, no dog in that fight. It's on the opposite side of the property. There will be no inconsistency with traffic moving from our site to folks, to, to kids who are on the southern side of that property. I just mention that because D.R. Horton is, is committed to providing for a, a safe, a safe situation for the folks who currently live there, as well for the folks who are gonna live there at some point, hopefully, down the road. So with that said, we're happy to continue working with the transportation engineering staff, as well as the community, to find a safe result for, for the future residents in this project. Thank you.
Okay. And before I ask the council for a motion, I wanna make sure that I'm clear with the town attorney, that if we table, we're tabling the annexation, and the rezoning, and the consistency, all in one.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion, but before I do, let me just reiterate what I'm hearing from the council. I'm hearing first that there are concerns about traffic safety and congestion. Possible mitigation would have to do with taking care of pedestrians in this vicinity, and also the congestion caused by vehicles trying to exit the neighborhood, or trying to exit on Turner Creek. So some kind of treatment that will fix that problem. Also, I'm hearing from Mr. Smith, and I think it's a very good recommendation, that it's important for the residents, the applicant, the town, to come together and work with NC DOT. I think it would be a supplication to the Board of Trustees, to try to get NC DOT to consider putting a signal at, I would say, Chesney Glen, which would stop traffic, enable, you know, giving pause in traffic to enable people to get out safely. But I also heard from Mr. Yurha, that he's not comfortable with the left out of the neighborhood at Report Drive, so that, that needs to be given further consideration, if it's good for the community, or not good for the community, to have that left out. I'm also hearing that there's concerns about the density, and that, at least from the mayor, maybe others, that the density might be so high that that's exacerbating the, the other elements of congestion and safety. And Mayor, you said that you would prefer to see some other housing product, so...
And I, I do agree with Mr. Smith, that, you know, there might be a way that you can, if you could present a sketch plan and show how it could work, you could convince me otherwise.
Okay. That's the challenge for the applicant.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we table, and let me go back and make sure I say the right numbers, 12A, excuse me, 12A 15, 12 REZ 20, and the corresponding comprehensive plan statement of consistency. And I make that motion that we table it indefinitely, giving the applicant the choice of when he wants to come back through the process.
Second? There's a motion, second. Further discussion?
Yeah, just one comment I wanted to make, I forgot. There was a bunch of people that spoke to school capacity issued concerns with, you know, density being, I think, one of the driver in that. Townhomes are gonna provide far less schoolchildren than single-family homes are. You know, your single-family homes are gonna have two, three, four children per unit, where townhomes are typically, you're either young professionals, new families just starting out, or seniors who have maybe downsized from that single-family home. So you, you could maybe get 40 single-family homes that generate just as many schoolkids as 94 townhomes would. So I would echo, I think, Ms. Robinson and Mr. Smith's comments about the quality of that product. So...
Okay. We have a motion, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We'll now move on to the comprehensive plan amendment. We're at item F2. It's a Twyla Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment, case number 13 CPAO2. Ms. Chandler of our staff will present the staff presentation, then we're gonna hear our planning board's recommendation, recommendation, and council may take action.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a town-initiated comprehensive plan amendment request, called Twyla Road Part Two, for properties located between Twyla Road and 540. Just a quick reminder, Twyla Road Part One was approved in October of last year, and that amended most of the land use designation in the Twyla Road neighborhood to mixed use. The subject properties are located along Twyla Road near 540. As per the Northwest Area Plan and the Southwest Area Plan, actually, north of the Morrisville Parkway Extension, which is the Magenta Dash Line, is the Northwest Area Plan, and south of that is Southwest Area Plan. So as per those plans, the current land use designation of the subject parcels is very low-density residential, and we propose to change that to mixed use. At the town council public hearing on June 27th, two citizens spoke in favor of the request, and you all had no questions about the case. At the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing last month, one citizen spoke in favor of the request, and one board member asked if the subject properties were wooded. Both the Northwest Area and Southwest Area Plan set the stage for examining the future, reexamining the future land use for the Twyla Road neighborhood, and that was mostly done with Twyla Road Part One. And this case, Twyla Road Part Two completes, or would complete, this land use designation transition and achieve consistency in this area. There are four criteria that the LDO sets for determining whether or not a comprehensive plan amendment is necessary, and staff believes the second item, new issues, needs, or opportunity has, opportunities, has been met. And staff recommends approval of this comprehensive plan amendment request. And I'll invite Mr. Swanstrom to come up and describe the Planning and Zoning Board vote and discussion.
As you've heard, we voted eight to one to recommend approval for this proposal. We viewed this as a continuation of the previous work we did on the Twyla, Twyla Road area, and just basically a necessary final step in what seemed like a logical step, or a logical plan that we previously approved. We did have one descending vote, and his concern was, he had not positioned a mixed use on this track, the whole Twyla, Twyla Road area, he had not positioned a mixed use. And he also had a desire that we keep a wooded area wooded, and that was the primary objection. So eight to one, wanna keep wooded and opposed, mixed use.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Swanstrom?
No question. I have a motion.
Okay, please.
We have approval of comprehensive plan amendment 13 CPAO2.
There's a motion, and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Chandler.
Thank you.
We now move to old, new business. Ms. Robinson has a council-initiated request, which is agenda item H1. Mrs. Robinson?
Great, thank you very much. This came about based on a conversation that I had with one of our staff members, who told me that last year we had diverted a little over 33,000 tons of waste material from our landfill, and that was through our recycling program, through our land use, or, excuse me, our material, our, excuse me, yard waste material, and, and things like our, our computer pickup and all that other kinda stuff, so all the initiatives that we have. Interestingly enough, that puts us at about 49% of our waste being diverted from the landfill, which I think is extremely high, and wonderful. So it begged the question of, could we do some things to make it easier for more citizens to divert material and get us over that 50% mark? So I'll lead in, say that, and let Mr. Hecht talk.
Well, I was here to follow your direction.
Oh, okay. All right, sounds good. Well, here's my direction.
Hang on, we'll, we'll check with Ms. Adcock, see if she has anything.
I was delighted to second this pink slip motion. I, I'm a big believer in recycling, and repurposing, and reusing, and it's a terrific opportunity to look at if, to look at additional opportunities out there for the town. And in addition, people may not realize, it's actually revenue generating as well, our recycling program. So it's another way to, to beef up that revenue stream. So it's just good for, on so many levels.
And specifically at this juncture, we haven't looked at anything, because we wanted to see if this was of interest to the whole council, before we kinda set our, our staff into looking for different initiatives. But this would be simple things, like encouraging people who have a second trash can to swap it out for, to, you know, give it back in, and not fill up two green trashcans a week. Or swap it out for a recycle bin. Or, you know, I've had several residents say to me that they have so much recyclables, they can't get it into their trashcan, then they have to start filling up their, excuse me, the recycle bin. Then they start filling up their trashcan with their overflow recyclables. So, you know, swapping out the smaller recycle bins for the larger ones, and providing something to accommodate those overflow recyclables if families are generating them. So that's some of the ideas, but there could be many, many more that the experts have.
And my favorite, which is make recycling weekly, and trash pickup every two weeks, or keep it on weekly. I mean, I could tell you right now, I could stand to have recycling pickup every week at my house.
I could.
We have so little trash and so much recycling. But I understand there, there are issues with that. There's staffing issues, there's equipment issues, there's scheduling issues.
There's a stink issue. There's a stink issue, and that's, it seems like it's...
Our trash does not smell, Lori. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're a family of six, and we generate two bags of trash a week.
I mean, it's amazing.
Very similar to you. I, I think right now you can swap out your smaller recycle bin for a larger one, just by asking.
Correct.
People don't know that. It's just one easy thing.
People don't know that, please do. And they'll be glad to provide you with a larger one. So don't put it in the trash, whatever you do, don't do that. Other direction, you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
Can I, can I ask?
Oh, please.
A question. When you, should this direction happen, would it include, are you thinking that it would include all types of opportunities, including potentially awareness campaigns, or not just actual new programs, but maybe other opportunities to just let people know the answers to some of these questions?
Absolutely, yes. You know, using any kind of outreach to let people know what we're already doing, you know, really pushing those rodeo reuse type events. There's a lot of things. I mean, even encouraging our businesses that don't use the town of Cary for pickup, that would be something that even though it wouldn't hit our numbers, it would certainly help our community and our landfill, because that stuff is going to the Wake County landfill. There are a lot, a lot of businesses aren't collecting recyclables.
Well, I'm glad you brought up that, because that's what I was going to recommend, is I know that we've talked with the Public Works Department about the potential for offering recycling to so many of the small businesses, and I don't know what that cost looks like. So that might be an interesting set of information that would also help us.
Mr. Hecht, do you have an idea of how many communities in North Carolina are diverting as great of a percentage as we are at this juncture?
If it's any, I'd be surprised. I think, from what I can sense, and the ones that we've seen in our IOG benchmarking study, we lead the way with, with those communities. And again, we've got a very strong program, strong participation, it's very mature, and, and we're excited to do this, and if, should council ask us and direct us to do that, well, my thoughts are, we'll put a, a lot of menu of options together with resources and costs and so forth. But, but keep in mind, one thing, when you saw the 49%, yard waste is part of that.
Yeah.
And this community is nuts with the amount of yard waste we pick up. As a matter of fact, we're a third, a third the size of Raleigh, and actually, we pick up about a half as much yard waste as Raleigh.
Wow.
In quantity. And having said that, this spring and summer has been very wet, so the volumes have been heavy with yard waste, yard material still growing, and, and the storm we had in June was about 1,200 tons, so just wanna caution...
So you're saying we might get over 50%?
That's just my only caution, which we'll lay all that out if we're directed to do so, but at, at trying to get a 50% number, next year, it could be a drought, and we could do all these extra efforts and be at 45% because the yard waste wasn't there. This has been an extremely heavy year with it, in part because of the weather, so...
Yeah, but it's...
But we'll frame all that up for you, and make sure you see that, but, but just, I wanna be cautious to put a 50%.
Do you have numbers for other years, so we can...
Oh, sure.
Because you just have, you know, one data point's one data point, so we don't know if next time it's higher or lower.
Yes, and I'm just thinking in my head, it'll be framed, that that will show several years of, of volumes and so forth, that you'll see all that.
That's great.
And we'll put some other community comparisons out there, too, should we go down this path, sure.
Okay. I mean, in the end, if we encourage more people, or enable more people to recycle more material, who cares if we don't hit that 50% number?
Sure.
I mean, in the end, we've, you know, we've improved our situation, but it would be nice to be able to kinda set incremental goals for our... to be able to kind of set incremental goals for ourselves and achieve...
Start a composting program. Bring all of our food to Dawn's house.
That's true.
We could recycle bicycles, you know?
Hey, hey, now... Important note, Dorcas Ministries takes everything. I mean, if you have those ripped up, like, that ripped up t-shirt, and you're like, oh, nobody's going to want this because they can't resell it, take it there, because they recycle the cloth. If you have an old scooter that doesn't...
Use that to wash the cars and stuff.
Or give it to Dawn's, he can wash cars. You know, if you have a scooter that doesn't work anymore, take it to them, they'll recycle the metal. I mean, it's, that should not be going into your trash bin.
And I would also just say, our oldest son's been volunteering at Dorcas this summer, and he's been doing the electronics, and things that don't work, they take them out, they take the copper out. I mean, they are such good stewards of what they get. They have something that happens with everything that does not go in the trash. I mean, it's absolutely, I mean, very little of it does, it's very amazing.
Yeah.
So, they're folks beyond the citizens and beyond the town that are really into this too, and what they do for the community.
Put in a good word for the Cary Creative Reuse Center here.
Yeah, let's do.
Right in the back.
Absolutely.
Etsy Dasal's, you know, endeavor. I mean, they do wonderful stuff, too, and something citizens should be aware of.
Well, the help is that whatever we direct, that, you know, you come back with a sliding scale of things. I mean, it does sound like, just from the ideas I've heard here, there's a lot of neat things that we ought to make people aware, but, you know, the pot's full and all the things we want to do, it's overflowing and we're out of money. I think it's great, we're already at 50%. I think anything we can do that's cost-effective and not labor-intensive with the staff, I think that's, you know, I'm open to it. But I think we've got to strike a balance, you know, on some of the things. So, you know, I think it's a good idea, because like I just heard, three ideas that, you know, don't naturally come to me, you know, with the Dorcas and the Rio Center and all that. And I think those things are good to know, and maybe there's a better way of communicating that information.
Are we ready for formal direction?
Oh, did I make the motion already? For some reason, I thought I had, I'm sorry.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, it's just in my mind. Okay, I make a motion that we direct staff to bring back ideas to the council that might expand our recycling program or enable more people to divert material from the landfill. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just want to echo Mr. Smith's comments that I'm not looking to spend any more money here. I'm looking to maybe see how we can, you know, make more efficient what we're already doing, or, you know, the education thing that Lori spoke of, I kind of like that. To me, adding a few sentences to the Bud Newsletter, you know, comes to mind, but I'm not looking to, I don't want to hit some fake 50% number just so we all feel good. That's, I just want to make that comment.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There's no closed session this evening. That concludes our business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcarry.org.